About the upcoming East Plus. With East Plus. I think it's important to note that it's the students like these young people in the audience tonight who really bring to the forefront the return on investment that the community has made with East Plus. The class of 2025 had a 99.7 graduation rate. Then our high schools were named among the best high schools in the U.S. News and World Report. And recently, NISH cited the Oconee County Schools as on its best teachers and on the best place to teach in Georgia. This East Plus, East Plus seven will focus on replacement of buses, instructional technology, some building renovations, and infrastructure improvements like replacing some roofs. Oconee County High School is proposed to have a blue and not a red roof. We also have water mitigation issues across the county, across our campuses that is pretty normal when you consider some of our buildings are 65 years old, but one is. But North Oconee is 21 years old now. So we also have HVAC systems that are old and need replacing. And we are focusing at with co-curricular areas and athletic improvements. So I just wanted to let the county know how much we appreciate your involvement in our support of schools and to remind everyone to vote. Early voting begins Tuesday here on October 14th and will run through October 31st. And the general election day is November 4th. I cannot tell you how to vote, but I will tell you I will vote and I encourage you to vote. Thank you.
Any other remarks from citizens on anything not on the agenda tonight? Any statements or remarks from commissioners? Well, thank Oconee County Fire Rescue. They're doing the education at the elementary schools this week. We've had, we're having about 16 volunteers a day show up to help with that program. It's running out really well. Also, we have official word that Klotfelter Road opened up this afternoon, so can travel along the new bridge tonight. Next item will be approval of the minutes. This is from September 9th, September 23rd, and September 30th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is the presentation of the proclamation for the Pilot International Founders Week. Going to ask Mark Thomas to read that proclamation.
Thank you, Chairman Daniel. I want to say it's an honor to be able to read this proclamation. I know most of the people in this organization, so shout you guys. Whereas Pilot International was founded in Macon, Georgia in October 1921, when a group of civic-minded business leaders established an international service organization. And whereas the founding members combined their diverse talents in friendship and service to improve the quality of life in communities throughout the world. And whereas Pilot International is comprised of 152 clubs and over 5,100 members worldwide. And whereas members of Pilot International strive to further the organization's humanitarian efforts through scholarships and grants to support research, education, and community caregiving programs. And whereas Pilot International is committed to serve in the areas of brain safety and health and supporting those who care for others. And whereas Pilot International partners with Project Lifesaver and other respected service organizations to promote awareness for injury prevention and care of those in need. And whereas Pilot International fosters volunteerism in more than 5,200 young people worldwide through its sponsorship of Anchor and Compass Clubs. And whereas Pilot International has been true to its mission to serve the communities throughout the world for 104 years. The Pilot Club of Oconee County has served Oconee County, Georgia since March 27, 1979. Now, therefore, it is fitting that the achievements and contributions of this worldwide organizations, its clubs, and its members be recognized on the anniversary by proclaiming October 12th through the 18th, 2025, as Pilot International Founders Week in Oconee County, Georgia. In witness whereof, I here unto set my hand and cause the official seal of Oconee County, Georgia, to be affixed this seventh day of October 2025, Board of, Oconee County Board of Commissioners, signed by John Daniel, Chairman.
Ladies, if you want to come up, we'll present you with the proclamation. Next item is the presentation of a proclamation recognizing National 4H Week and Master 4H Award winners, Commissioner Horton.
Whereas the young people of Georgia and Oconee County are our greatest natural resource and whereas the 4H program has assisted in the growth and development of Georgia and Oconee County youth for more than 115 years. And whereas adult volunteer leaders and advisors are devoting their talents, leadership, and resources to serve these leaders of tomorrow. And whereas Oconee County 4H grows true leaders and encourages young people and adults to become involved in the educational and entertaining projects offered by the 4H program in Oconee County through the University of Georgia College of Agricultural and Environmental Sciences, offered to extension. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Oconee County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of October 5th through the 11th of 2025 as National 4H Week in Oconee County and urges all our citizens to observe this important event and give it the attention to which it is so rightly entitled. In witness whereof, I have, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of Oconee County, Georgia, to be affixed this seventh day of October 2025, Oconee County Board of Commissioners, signed by Chairman John Daniel.
Thank you all. Lisa, if you'd like to come up and say a few words and present.
Good evening, Chairman Daniel and Commissioners. I'm Lisa Gibson, your Oconee County 4H agent with the University of Georgia, and it's an honor to be with you this evening as part of National 4H Week. It's been said that you can't go home again because if you do and try to return to a place that you remember from the past, it won't be the same as you remember it. As an Oconee County high school graduate, there may be some truth to that. Oconee County sure has grown. But as I've been now, I think because preparing for this job, I'm not necessarily counting the days, but some 97 days into the job, I found that I've returned home to the family of friends and the connections and the heart that's very special here at Oconee County. So it's great to be home in Georgia 4H. And just with our motto, to make the best better, that's my goal and vision for Oconee County 4H. The future has never looked brighter. We have the opportunity to continue to grow our program and involve even more students. We have current student leaders who, like me, recognize that their involvement has helped them grow and thrive, and they want to reach more of their peers and their fellow students. 4H is the largest youth organization in the nation, and here in Oconee County, we serve young people through in-school programs, after-school programs, such as judging events and leadership and citizenship activities, as well as camps and conferences. Our mission is simple but powerful, to help young people learn by doing, find their spark, and become beyond ready. While other, whether it's public speaking, ag and stem, healthy living, or civic engagement and leadership, 4H gives youth real-world skills that last a lifetime. In Oconee County, 4Hers aren't just learning, they're leading. Our senior 4H members serve on district and state boards, represent Georgia at national events, and bring home top honors often in project competitions. Our fifth graders begin their 4H journey in classrooms across the county, learning teamwork, confidence, and civic engagement through project achievement and their club meetings. Over 500 fifth graders will participate in the school project achievement this year. And just this week and last week, we've begun our October club meetings with officer elections. How fun it is to think about these young people as they may credit 4H as the beginning of their leadership journey as they did their campaign speeches for president of their 4H club meeting. This past July, many of the students in this off, in this auditorium, we had nine 4Hers participating in state 4H Congress, which was quite an impressive record from one county. Our staff, our volunteers, and our parents, many of which I would say are probably the most supportive parents in the county, some of them are here tonight. And community partners like yourself make all of this possible. This year's National 4H theme is Beyond Ready, and we're celebrating the sense of belonging and purpose young people find in our program. And on behalf of the Oconee County 4H, thank you for your continued support and for investing in the future of our young people. Tonight, we recognize the following students and their accomplishments. And 4Hers, as you come up, if you'll please remain in the front. Tyson Mathis, he masters in outdoor recreation this year. Reagan Reynolds, she mastered in sheep and meat goats. And Blair Smith, she mastered in poultry. These are all project masters. You may remember Sawyer Mathis last year. He was the chicken barbecue winner. Well, just a few weeks ago, he mastered in turkey barbecue. So maybe one day we'll have a restaurant, don't you think? But one of these days, he owes us a good turkey or barbecue meal. Sawyer Mathis, come on up and let's recognize you. You know, it's not often that our board members, and if you'll come on over. That counties have so many board members on the district and state level, but we have quite a few, which is really an honor. It speaks very highly of Oconee County. So if you'll please meet me at the podium, we have Blair Smith, who's a Northeast District Senior Board Member. We have Levi Birch, who's also a Senior Board Member, Northeast District. And also Molly Ann McLean, who's also a Senior Board Member. Serving on our Junior Board Member is Charlie Brooks. And we're also recognizing Tyson Mathis, who's on our State Board of Directors this year. Now with us tonight is James Linder, who's serving as the role as our County Council President. Commissioners and Chairman, if you'll please join me in celebrating these young 4Hers. Yeah, but I don't know if I know how to use it anymore. I'd do better with this. Like one with the 4H camera too.
Now move to our hearings and actions on zoning matters. Our first case is rezon request P 25-0153. The Landing of Bogart LLC requests to modify the conditions of an existing rezon P 20-0238, 14.8894 acres. This is located at 2881 Monroe Highway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Again, this is rezon P 25-0153, The Landing of Bogart LLC applicant and owner. The parcels you have listed in your packets, that's currently zoned OIP in the Community Village Character area. And the request again is to change the conditions, the previous zoning case, P 20-0238, with zoned OIP. The request to change is to increase the allowed total square footage of all structures to 138,422 square feet. You have the concept plan in your application packet, a slightly larger version. The building in question that we're proposing, that the applicant is proposing to expand is this location. These are the architectural images you have in your application. And staff recommends conditional approval with our three standard conditions. Number four, all parcels which are part of this rezoning action shall be held in common ownership by a single entity, The Landing Senior Living LLC, which shall also be the sole condominium declarant. The condominium plat and condominium declaration shall be amended to provide that the property is part of a single owner comprehensive senior living community, and that sale of individual units is strictly prohibited. Tax assessors shall merge all such parcels into the single tax parcel. Prior to the application for the site development permit, the owner shall submit for review and to be recorded recombinations plat that abandons all existing condominium lines to combine the property into a single parcel. Number five, total building square footage on the property shall not exceed 138,422 square feet. And the planning commission recommends approval with the same conditions. Thank you.
Justin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Justin Greer, Pittman and Greer Engineering. Little history on the project, it was zoned in '04 for a car wash and the office complex. And in 2017, we came before you guys and for, for Mr. Robert Massey, took the car wash and modified it to the assisted living facility. There were four units, four buildings that were constructed as part of the office complex. I guess the original intent was just to leave those as offices. They came back in 2021, modified those offices and to convert those into individual cottages to go along with the overall assisted living building. Re-originally, on our original plan in 2017, had the two main buildings separate, so there was a walkway that connected them. Since then, they've decided they want to connect those buildings, do some more kind of common area on each floor for seating and gathering purposes, and that's the reason for the increase this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak for the rezon? Does anyone wish to speak against? With that, we'll close public comment. Any questions from Commissioners? Entertainer motion?
Make a motion we approve P 25-0153, The Landing of Bogart LLC. Request to modify the condition of existing rezon P 20-0238, 14.8894 acres, 2881 Monroe Highway residential with the five conditions.
Okay.
We have a motion to second, approve rezon request P 25-0153 with five conditions. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is rezon request P 25-0157, NIW Holdings LLC. This is a rezoning from AG to R1, seven acres at 2001 Atlanta Highway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Again, this is rezon P 25-0157, NIW Holdings LLC. This is parcel B 01050 along Atlanta Highway and Pete Dickens Road. It's currently zoned AG in the corridor commercial character area. And the request is a rezon seven acres from AG to R1, single-family residential district. This is the recorded plat of the property. This is the concept plan showing the four lots, two off of Atlanta Highway and two off of Pete Dickens, slightly larger version. Architectural images that were submitted with the application. And staff recommends conditional approval with our three standard conditions. And the planning commission recommended approval with the same conditions. Thank you.
Justin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Justin Greer, Pittman and Greer Engineering. Pretty simple request before you this evening, seven acres, splitting it up into four lots. I know that the future comp plan calls for it to be commercial. There's a fair amount of residential out here and there's no septic, I mean, there's no sewer, so the, it would be on, the commercial would have to be on septic. We have gotten a soil test done. Lot number two, there's a kind of a draw with some bad soils. We've tried to work around that a little bit. R1 across the road, similar to smaller sized lots. Behind that R1 is some duplexes, so a lot of residential in the area. Be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak for the rezon? Does anyone wish to speak against? With that, we'll close public comments. Any questions from Commissioners? We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve rezon P 25-0157.
We have a motion to second to approve rezon request P 25-0157 with three conditions. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is special use for P 25-0150. This is Justin Cooper, it's a special use approval for a manufactured home as a secondary and temporary residence on 13.35 acres located at 1300 Sam Cooper Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Again, this is special use P 25-0150, William Terrell Mulkey, applicant owner. This parcel B 08025G, currently zoned AG in the agricultural preservation character area. And the applicant is requesting special use approval to add a manufactured home as a second dwelling on a property that has an existing site-built, single-family home. This is the recorded plat you have in your packet. The concept plan showing the proposed location, the existing home, the proposed location of the accessory structure. These are architectural images submitted with the application. And staff recommends conditional approval with our one standard condition. Number two, the owner shall bring all structures into compliance prior to issuance of the building permit for the manufactured home. And planning commission recommended approval with the same conditions. Thank you.
Lindsay Cooper?
Hi, my name is Lindsay Cooper, and I'm speaking on behalf of me and my husband, Justin Cooper. We are applying for the special use permit for the secondary home for my parents that are here with us, and that is just to be able to take care of them through some health conditions that they're going through. And I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak for the special use? Does anyone wish to speak against? With that, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Any questions from Commissioners? Entertain a motion?
Make a motion we approve use, special use P 25-0150, Justin L. Cooper. Special use approved for a manufactured home as a second temporary residence, 13.35 acres, 1300 Sam Cooper Road residential with the two conditions.
Okay.
I have a motion to second to approve special use P 25-0150 with two conditions. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is, is a variance request P 25-0148, Seminole Woods Boulevard LLC. This is a request to allow metal siding on a proposed barn. It's 127.62 acres located at 1555 Hale Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Again, this is variance P 25-0148, Timothy Eric Honeycutt, applicant and Seminole Woods Boulevard owner. This is parcel B 12001B. Currently zoned AG in the agricultural preservation character area. And their request is a special accession variance from Oconee County Unified And there requested a special exception variance from Oconee County Unified Development Code, Section three oh-four oh-three, to allow for metal siding on a proposed barn with a farm tenant dwelling. You have the recorded plat, location of the structure, a primary structure under construction now, the location of proposed barn. On the concept plan, these are the architectural renderings submitted with the application and floor layout. And staff recommends conditional approval with our one standard condition. Thank you.
Sam Oswald?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Sam Oswald. I am the owner of Seminole Woods Boulevard LLC. I'm here to answer any questions you might have today. I also have Eric Honeycutt with Morton Buildings. Should you have any questions about the structure? And I thank you for taking the time to review this variance.
Does anyone else wish to speak for the variance? Does anyone wish to speak against? With that, we'll close public comments. Any questions from Commissioners? They were ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll have to make a motion to approve variance P twenty-five dash zero one forty-eight for Seminole Woods Boulevard LLC. The request to allow metal siding on a proposed barn on their hundred and twenty-seven point six-two acres at fifteen fifty-five Hale Road with one condition.
I have a motion and a second for variance request P twenty-five dash zero one four eight with one condition. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is a text amendment to the Unified Development Code, Article ten, Project Design and Construction Standards, and Article twelve, Procedures and Permits.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Again, this is a text amendment to Article ten and twelve of Unified Development Code. Revision, the first one is revision to Section ten oh-eight dot oh-three, Street Classifications, Traffic Impact Studies, to provide cross-reference to the required standards in Article twelve. Number two, revisions to Section twelve oh-two, definitions related to procedures and permits to add a definition of traffic design year. Number three, revisions to Section twelve oh-six oh-four B, Traffic Impact Analysis, to revise the standards required for road improvements as a condition of zoning when a project is located on a four-lane US-divided highway. Number four, revisions to Section twelve twenty-one oh-eight, On-Site Septic System Plans, to allow administrative approval of a site development plan for non-residential projects without a health department onsite septic permit. The septic permit would be required prior to a building permit being pulled or issued as already indicated in Section twelve twenty-five oh-three A dot F, Procedures to obtain a building permit. In your application packets, you have the redlined versions. I'll be glad to answer any questions should you have any.
Any questions from Commissioners on this item? Do we have any public comment on this? I believe we're ready for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the text amendments as presented.
Okay.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is discussed and considered. The Board initiated rezon modification of previous rezones eight-three-four-zero and zero-four-three. Deferred Tax LLC is thirty-three point six-five-seven acres, located at twelve ninety-one Virgil Langford Road, Highway three sixteen, Oconee Connector and Mars Hill Road. Justin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The site mentioned was previously up for rezoning in two thousand twenty-two by Deferred Tax LLC. The Board of Commissioners denied the request at that time. The Board and the applicant have since been in litigation. The, the subject property was originally zoned in nineteen eighty-eight, nineteen ninety-two for an aggregate square footage over three hundred thousand square feet. Since that time, there has been substantial changes to the road layout, including acquisition of property as far as the roads, making challenges to the existing site plans. On the advice of council, it is recommended that the Board initiate a rezoning of the subject property for the litigation to ultimately bring a new site plan and zoning under the current property itself. The, the aggregate, and the memo would go on the website after this, this direction of the, of the commission, not to exceed a hundred and seventy thousand square feet of non-residential square footage. It would be applied to the property and a site plan that would meet the staff's recommendations. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I would just remind everybody that the subject property was still is part of litigation currently.
Are there any questions from Commissioners?
Just a couple of clarifications. Mr. Chairman, not having gone through a board-initiated rezon, does this go to the planning commission?
No, this, this would go directly to the Board of Commissioners as a board-initiated action.
Okay. And the second question is, when would we take this up on our agenda?
So assuming approval, staff will advertise, this would be on the December meeting.
So, so the public will have an opportunity, I mean, we'll put things on our website, the plan and all that, so the public will have an opportunity to review those?
That is correct. The staff report will be generated and issued with its recommendation and a new site plan attached to it.
So the public's only opportunity to have input at a public hearing is in our, at a December meeting?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from Commissioners? With that, I believe we're ready for a motion.
Make a motion we approve the Board initiation of a rezon modification of previous rezons eight-three-four-zero and zero-four-three. Deferred Tax LLC, thirty-three point six-five acres, twelve ninety-one Virgil Langford Road, Georgia Highway three sixteen, Oconee Connector, and Mars Hill Road. Vacant.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second to approve a board-initiated rezon. Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Does any Commissioner wish any item to be removed from the consent agenda? Here none, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent items as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have no need of an executive session, so Commissioner Sacks?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
We are adjourned.